Good evening. Today is Monday, February 6th, regular session of the Board of School Trustees of the School City of Chicago. The time is 6:00 PM. The place is the Administration Building, 1401 East 144th Street, East Chicago, Indiana, 46312. We're also via live stream at www.scec.k12.in.us. This is a meeting of the school board in public to conduct the school corporation business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Present.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Present.
Trustee Gibson King? Chairman Rodriguez?
President. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
On January 25th, 2023, we had an exec session. I just, for state statute reasons, I'm going to have to read this as follows. I certify that the Board of School Trustees met an exec session called to the public on Friday, January 25th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Administration Building. The following members were in attendance: myself, Chairman Rodriguez, Jesse Gomez, Patty Jo Gibson King, Diane Smith, and Vanessa Hernandez Orange, all board trustees. Items discussed were published in the public notice. No subject matters were discussed other than the subject matter specified in the public notice. No vote or determination of the items discussed was made. So put that into record. Next is the agenda. 3.01, approval of the agenda. Is there any questions or comments from the audience regarding the approval of the agenda? Here none? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, I move for approval of the agenda.
Trustee Gomez makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Trustee Smith. Any discussions? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Yes.
Chairman Rodriguez?
Yes. Item 4, consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments from the audience regarding the approval of the consent agenda? Here none?
I, oh.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Here none? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, I mean, Mr. President, I make a motion for approval.
Okay, motion made by Trustee Smith. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Gomez. Any discussions?
President Rodriguez, I have a question. We had a change in the distribution of payroll, but it just highlights that there was a change in the distribution of payroll. What was the change?
Dr. Brigle?
I usually have Ms. Simmons help me with that, but I don't see her here. I'm unaware.
Ms. Bigum, she's trying to, can you?
The payroll for last Friday was added, so that's the sheet for Friday. It's two paydays.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bigum.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Yes.
Chairman Rodriguez?
Yes. New business, 5.01, approval of a library board member. Now, pursuant to Indiana Code 36-12-2-9, Section 9 reads, "Two members of the library board is appointed by the school board of schools corporation and where the principal administrative offices of the library are located. The library board serves as a liaison between the public and the library. It is responsible for ensuring that the library is well managed and operated in accordance with the law." Is there any questions or comments at this time for the approval of a library board member? Here none? Do I hear a motion for consideration of a library board member at this time?
Mr. President.
Trustee Gomez.
I'd like to move to retain Priscilla Askew in her position as a library board member.
Motion made by Trustee Gomez to retain Priscilla Askew as library board trustee. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Trustee Smith seconds that motion. Is there any discussions?
President Rodriguez?
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Well, I would like to congratulate Ms. Askew ahead of time, and I'm glad it was done. But I do want to apologize to her and to all the other applicants for wasting your time. Like I was told my fellow colleagues, it seems like we ask people to submit resumes, but I'm not sure for what reason. If there was already a majority pick, then there was no need for us to move and waste your time. With that, I'm once again asking for the Policy Committee to bring forth a policy regarding library board appointments. By bringing forth a policy, there would be something spelled out, and we would move the same way every single time. So if the Policy Committee could just address that, I think that would be great for the district.
Any other discussions?
I'd just like to say congratulations, Ms. Askew. Job well done. Your heart is in it. The district knows it, and we're proud of you. And continue the work, and let's get that new library built.
Any other discussions? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Yes.
Chairman Rodriguez?
5.02, approval of MOU with Calumet College of St. Joseph. Dr. Brigo?
Yes, thank you, Board President. This is basically a partnership with Calumet College and the School City of Chicago. What we are trying to do is we have teachers on emergency permits. Some of these teachers are attending Indiana University, Purdue University, but it's taken them a long time to get their certification. So through a partnership with Calumet College, we streamline this to getting it done in one year. We're going to have a cohort of teachers that are on their emergency permits. We're going to have them come together as a cohort, and Calumet College will come here and deliver services to our teachers every Saturday for one year, and that's a fast-track program for them to become certified.
Is there any questions or comments from the audience regarding the approval of the MOU with Calumet College of St. Joseph? Here none? Do I hear a motion to approve the MOU?
Mr. President, I move for approval of 5.02. 5.02.
Trustee Gomez makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Trustee Smith. Any discussions?
Trustee Rodriguez?
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
I had a couple of questions, and I did ask Dr. Brigo earlier today, and I think he called me back with Dr. Mitchell in regards to this, but I was unable to answer the phone call. So I will repeat my questions and maybe Dr. Mitchell. I see Ms. Simmons is not here, who's over the finances. But I think these are questions that we ran into issue previously with one of our other former superintendents in a program like this. So the first question I have is who actually qualifies to the program? Because in the document, it states anyone who's a SSEC employee. With that being said, does that mean that if I am just a coach and not me maximum time of being per hour in a classroom, would I be qualified? Or even a bus driver or an aide, would they qualify to do this also?
With this particular MOU, this is geared towards teachers that's on emergency permit. And that emergency permit means that they already have a degree, and they're going back either towards a transition to teaching program, or they just have a few credit hours that they need to acquire so they'll be better prepared to take the Praxis exam to become a licensed teacher. I know that the other MOU that you may be referring to, that was a MOU that was created with IUN, and the language was really loose. I've been working with Attorney Jewel Harris's office with Nick Brown, and we're working to really add some clarity to that documentation. But to answer your question, this is specifically for teachers on emergency permit.
Thank you. The other question is, do we have enough money for this with the financial rules? So if we have, and I'm not sure how many teachers will actually qualify, or individuals will qualify for the program, but I'm seeing that with the, it's basically some for elementary would be $12,000, or secondary would be $9,000, including the extra tuition charges and schools, the books. So can we afford that? How long does that go for, for one individual? And would we be able to afford that, for all that?
Yes. With Cal College St. Joe's program, that's the total cost of tuition for the program. And yes, those dollars will come out of the Title II funds for professional development. There's enough dollars there because all these teachers will be staggered. Currently, the ones that's with the Indiana University program and a Purdue Northwest program, they're still on a traditional credit hour system where they take so many credit hours per semester, and that usually takes up to a couple of, maybe two to three years for them to complete those programs. This is accelerated program, and it'll be a cohort, so we'll know exactly what that cost is and how many we can take per cohort.
So then you're determining basically how many we could afford, in a sense?
Yes. Yes, those, the financial pieces were done, and so we know exactly how many we can take per cohort. I work really closely with Cindy Castro, who's over federal programs, to really map that out based on how many are in our, how many we have allocated for the IUN, the Purdue, and now the Cal College St. Joe.
So what are those numbers?
You want to know the numbers of how many people are in the IUN program? It's 23 in the program.
Well, this one that we would...
We have to drop, oh, there's nobody in this program yet. This hasn't started yet.
That's what I'm saying, but how many do you, have you guys, I guess, budgeted for through that Title II?
Okay. With the Title II program, for this particular program, we're going to start off with a cohort of 10.
So 10 individuals at between 12,000 and 9,000?
That's not all paid at, all paid once, and so if you look at it, you're actually going across two budget years because our budget, the fiscal year starts July 1. So those who come in before July 1, they're in the previous budget year. Those after July 1 would be in the upcoming school year. And by going over two budget years, it could appear that there may be more money than is, but it's really the same amount. So we made sure that we wouldn't have any cost overruns. And with this way, we know exactly what those costs are. With the IUN and Purdue programs, we don't know what the costs are because we don't know how many credit hours the individual is going to take. But we know this, how many credit hours they're going to take because the program of study is laid out. And if there is a stop, what we call a stopover, like if they can't take a class, we still know that they'll be getting that class in within a year's time.
Okay. I just try to make sure we're fiscally responsible when we're doing this stuff, and I think it's a great program. I know we need teachers, so I understand that the more we get connected with other universities, it's a funding behind it.
And to engage really with the IUN program, but I do have a great relationship with Dr. Spurley, and we will be sitting down about that. With this particular program, I asked the Executive Vice President of Cal College St. Joe if he would do the financial aid process first that they have there. So if any of our teachers qualify for the Pell Grant, the Pell Grant will be applied first, and then our dollars will be second. Normally, what happens is that scholarship dollars are applied first and then other dollars, but they're willing to look at that and apply those Pell dollars if they do have them first.
Got it. My second question, so in the agreement, it says that we could decide who pays for the seminar and the books, and then the agreement that we have between us and the individual says that we're basically taking up everyone. So was that written, was that what you guys wanted to say?
Yes, that was the same language that was pretty much in the IUN documentation, that we would cover the cost of books and tuition and fees. And so we didn't want to deviate from one program from another because then at that point, you would have something that wouldn't be equitable.
And my last thing was, if we end up, I know we're looking for licensed teachers, so even if we have licensed teacher come in, and let's say we have an influx, or, that's wishful thinking, right? I know, but hey, if we do and we have to let go of somebody, what happens then? We'll just, would we pay for them to finish out the program?
No. The way that the contract, that's the MOU with the college. We have a contract with the, with our employee, and that contract with our employee says that if we have to terminate, if the relationship is dissolved because of us, there's no cost. But if this was dissolved because they didn't do something, then they would have to pay back the dollars that we paid to them. And after completion, it's written in that they would, that they're guaranteed with us to stay with us for three years. If they choose to leave us before that three-year period is up, then again, they would be responsible for paying the cost that we put out to get them, to provide that education to them, for them to get their licensure.
And I have a question. Do you know how much is actually allotted in the Title II fund offhand? Because I know I don't, I'm actually trying to look for it meanwhile you're speaking.
Yeah. I'm not exactly sure what's allotted, but I do know that when we went through the, and I don't want to speak prematurely, I have a number in my head, but I don't want to say it and someone hold it to me like that's the gospel or something like that. But trust that we did run the numbers before we went into this, went into this piece, and we ascertained that we can support a cohort of 10 this first year.
Dr. Brigo, do you happen to know?
I can give you an approximate. I know it's into millions. It's got to be about, I think, 2 million, give or take.
Is there any discussions? Any other discussions from the board?
Mr. President.
Trustee Gomez.
Just curious, Dr. Mitchell, is there a similar program at another school district? Do they have an MOU similar to this with the...
Yes. Yeah, I know that there's Cal College St. Joe, they have a program with this. They have Whiting schools. I believe they also have, there may be a contract in with the Hammond schools. I know a little bit more about the Purdue and the IU programs because I know exactly what schools that they're in because I speak with those deans often and have a really great relationship with Cal College St. Joe. The person that was over this program, Dr. Matt Venice, he left the college this year, and otherwise I wouldn't know exactly because I had a great relationship with him. But I know that they are in Whiting, and I know they do have a couple of teachers that's from Hammond in this, in their particular program.
Yeah, I don't know if we are on cutting edge on this program, but I think it's a good, a good start for us, something that, you know, we probably needed for a long, long time. So I applaud you, Superintendent, for putting this together. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. I do have one question. This may be an attorney question, Attorney Harris. Is there a stipulation in the agreement that states if the person, if the individual or employee completes the program, can, do we, can we sign a teacher contract or something which can hold them here for two years or one year, whatever it is, three years?
Yes, in the agreement between the teacher and the district, there is language in there regarding employment going forward. In fact, there's language there protecting the district that says that there's no guarantee of employment, but there is the opportunity for employment. And Dr. Mitchell, if you want to elaborate on that.
It's a tuition agreement.
Yeah, and that particular contract that we have, that we do with the, with our employee says that they're committed to us for three years.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Yes.
Chairman Rodriguez?
Yes. 5.03, approval of MOU with Geminis Corporation Prevention Services Department. Dr. Brigo?
Yes, again, this is a program that's going to be with, at Central High School. Basically, it's two goods for drugs, and what we're trying to do is have a partnership. When they come in, they pre and post-test our students to find out to what extent this is taking place in our district. If they find out that it is taking place, they will provide some supports in the areas of, give me one second, please. Mentoring our students with their social-emotional learning and also provide some behavioral interventions. And the total cost of the program is $5,000, so we think this is a wise investment because if it is taking place in our district, we have some support systems in place.
Any questions or comments from the audience regarding the approval of the MOU with Geminis Corporation Prevention Services Department? Do I hear a motion on the floor for the approval of the MOU?
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Trustee Gomez makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Trustee Smith. Is there any discussions?
President Rodriguez?
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
So I did, once again, call Dr. Brigo regards to this, and I did have a question as to why this program came about. Like, do we have some type of data stating that our kids are suffering from a drug program? So for instance, are we having suspensions because we're catching kids with drugs? Do we work with the police department to find out if there's minors consuming drugs? Or now, from what I'm hearing, is that we're just going to test students to see if they are using drugs in order for us to run this program? I guess I just wanted some more clarification into the program because I didn't get any.
And I tried to answer some of your questions. I said we're taking preventive measures, but Dr. Mitchell, if you want to expand on the program?
Well, first off, this program doesn't cost us anything. It's really a program that Geminis has reached out to us, and they're going to train our faculty to become proficient in not only identifying, but also providing immediate services to those students. And yes, before we went into this program, we did engage our social workers. Our social workers had saw uptick... Our social workers had saw uptick in primarily, really, the use of melatonin. And melatonin, I guess, gives a kind of hallucinogenic sleep-like state, and they were, and that's something you can buy at the drugstore over the counter. There's also appeared to be upticks in the use of marijuana, as well as some other, some other, I guess, mind-altering chemicals. And so with this particular program, the pre and post, it's not drug testing, it's the pre and post, pre and post-test based on the usage of such drugs, the knowledge of those drugs. And then, so they look at it at the very beginning to see what the usage is, what the knowledge is, how much information they have. Do they know what the impact of this drug causes on them? And then the post-test is after they go, after the teachers go through the training, implement the program, then they do the post-test. And the post-test should reveal if they have gained more knowledge on and become more aware of the impact that drugs can have on themselves and their peers. And this program will go on for a period of, well, since September 1 to August 1. So we're a little bit behind the timeline, but for all intents and purposes, we do know that our counseling, our counselors, and especially our social workers are completely behind this particular program. We had extensive conversations with them before we went forward. We're trying to bring Geminis into our district to provide that training to our faculty.
So when you stated that there's an uptake in melatonin, that's just for peer discussion between the social worker and the student, since we're not drug testing?
Right, right, right.
And we didn't, we didn't contact, I guess, so we find out that there's marijuana and that we find out that there's melatonin, but we just leave it at that? We, there's no, there's no suspensions, no anything? We just kind of?
Well, there are, there are some consequences from administration in terms of that, but you have to say, take it that most of it's going to be self-report because if it's not used on school premises and they don't bring it to school, then we really don't have a recourse. But that doesn't mean that it's not being utilized. And because of the relationship that our social workers have developed with our students, they do share that type of information. And because they were sharing that type of information, the social workers really felt that this would be an excellent program to bring into the district to, as Dr. Brago say, to be preventative and more so, but also to make sure that our students have enough knowledge to know what the true impacts are. And those impacts are usually greater than themselves. And I don't know what else to say, but if you look at it, they're looking to address a minimum of 500 students. And out of that 500 students, they are requiring 80% of those students to go through the program. And then there's also some metrics in there. If you look at the second page, the metrics also hold us accountable for doing our part and for the delivery of the dollars for this particular program, so.
Right. No, I understand. I just, I'm, I want to make sure that there's a basis of data that why we're trying to implement this to our students, because if there isn't, then we're accusing our students of doing some type of drugs, and let's talk to them about it prior to even really knowing if it's actually happening or not. Again, when it comes to the city of East Chicago, you're not seeing uptake in drugs in minority, in minors. That's not something that's happening. And obviously, in our school system, that's not something that's proven. So if you have some type of data that supports that, then that's great. When do parents find out that your child is going to actually have these conversations with Geminis? Because I know on here, they're able to get all of the medical information, but when are parents given the information that your child is going to participate in this program?
That will be up to the school that this program is. That would be the administration's call when and how they will alert the parent. We know that we can't do anything without parent's permission, and I know that they probably didn't want to be premature and announce something that they didn't know whether or not they were going to be able to actually execute. So to answer your question, that will be a call by the principal at Central High School.
Any other discussions?
I do have a comment, if I could.
Sure.
Just to piggyback on Trustee Hernandez Orange's concerns, it may be a good idea for us to develop a uniform consent form for all the schools, just so that we don't have any issues with one school doing it right, another school doing it wrong. A uniform consent form may be a good idea.
Any other discussions?
Mr. President.
Trustee Gomez.
To that comment, Dr. Mitchell, did you say this is only going to be applicable at the high school?
Yes, East Chicago Central High School.
We would just need one more.
I thought his comment was it depends on the school.
No, no, no. What I said, it depends on, I was, I meant to say it depends on the administration at the school, but it's Central High School.
Got you.
All right. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
I just don't feel comfortable because we don't have all the correct items that we need to put it on record, so I have to say no.
Chairman Rodriguez.
Yes. 5.04, approval of collective bargaining agreement with Maintenance.
Yes, I'm going to have to defer to Dr. Martin Mitchell on that one.
And there's a typo because it does say collective.
Custodial.
Yeah, so it's actually bargaining agreement. Dr. Brago?
Yes, Dr. Mitchell, if you could help us with that, I think you took the lead role on that negotiating process.
Yes, we, the CFO and myself, we did a reopener with the Local 73, the SEIU, the custodians. And in that, we pretty much offered a similar, similar benefits that we did for the other CBAs that we, that we went through. On January 31, we TA'd this particular document, so it's ready to be presented. What we, if you look at your, if you look at the proposed amendments dated January 30, 2023, that's what I'm going to go through now. I believe that Ms. Diane Biggum sent you not only the last amendment, but also the full document. So that should answer any questions from the past. But looking at what we're going forward, the custodians will receive a 3% increase to the salary schedule. The salary schedule is attached, $800, what we call bonus pay, but that bonus pay was just really to offset the cost of the increase of insurance. The memorandum of understanding for retroactive pay, it reads, "The parties agree that employees who are employed on February 20, 2023, the day the board approved," we have this as being board-approved at that time. We didn't know what docket this would end up on, but they would, it would be retroactive back to January 1. And that's for the retroactive pay for that salary increase. The second MOU has similar language. This is also, it's about the COVID days. And this is the same thing that we provided the teachers, as well as the other CBAs that's come before you, that they will be able to get paid for up to five COVID days, given that they have a positive PCR test. And that's also retroactive to the beginning of this school year. If you go forward, there's the final MOU, and that's relating to sick days, that sick and personal, sick days, personal days, and vacation time, where the bargaining unit here would be able to donate sick, personal, and vacation time to an employee, given that they have valid reason from their doctor. And so that's really the only way that those sick and vacation days can be donated, as if someone has shown a medical reason and they've run out of days and are actually in doc days, they can get, someone can donate days to them, up to five days.
Any questions or comments from the audience regarding the collective bargaining agreement with Local SEIU? Any questions to Dr. Mitchell? Do I hear a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with SEIU, with Maintenance?
Mr. President, I move for approval of 5.04.
Trustee Gomez makes a motion to approve 5.04. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second made by Trustee Hernandez Orange. Any discussions?
Mr. President.
Trustee Gomez.
Just a couple of questions. Page nine, for example, there's signatures on here for the board, 42822. I'm not sure who signed off on this document. And then on page nine, it looks like somebody's signature was whited out here.
I think you may be looking at past documents. The document that submitted for this particular amendment is only, I think it's three pages. So it's going to be the very top pages of.
Yeah, this one has 38 pages on it.
Yeah, yeah. What was asked in the last board meeting that we did at CBA was that we provide the history coming up to that particular, the last amendment. So what you have is the amendment from last year, and then you have the original document that's the CBA that goes until 2026. So these are just amendments to that. So what you're, what you're actually referencing, that's already been approved. And what's on the, I guess, being heard tonight is the three pages of the changes that's for this current year.
I understand that, but once the board approves, signatures don't go on this paper until the board approves it.
Yes.
So I'm asking whose signatures are on this document?
Oh, the document that you have before you, that's just Brandon Bowles. There's only one signature on there, Brandon Bowles, and you have my initial saying that we agree with the TA.
I understand that. I'm just asking for these other pages. Who is signing documents for the board?
Oh, those were past board members.
Whose signature is this? It says April 28, 2022.
Page eight you were referring to?
On page eight?
Yeah.
And page nine looks like somebody's signature was deleted. We were given this entire document, so I'm just asking.
I have.
Signatures don't go on until they get board-approved.
Right, right. And I have no idea.
Who signed this document?
Right. I have no idea because I wasn't here in 2022, Trustee Gomez.
He was to be Dixon's signature, but that's just my guess.
Okay, and that was going to be my other question. Who negotiated this contract?
This contract was nego, this contract was negotiated by myself, Ms. Lila Simmons, and also attorney Cantrell was present.
Okay.
Pardon? Only the amendment, not the contract.
Oh, no, no. Yeah, just, that's just the amendment. Only what I, what I was a part of was the amendment, not the, not the contract.
Okay.
That probably is Dixon.
Any other discussions? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Yes.
Chairman Rodriguez?
Yes. 5.05, approval of agreement with Community Health Net Inc. Dr. Brago?
Yes, and I want to make it clear that this is a report from Dr. Mitchell, and I'll try to just help a little bit, Dr. Mitchell, if I leave something out. But basically, what we're trying to do is bring back medical supports that we used to have at Central High School for our students. In the past, we had a clinic on the second floor. Now, what we're trying to do is have medical assistance for our students on the first floor, and of course, their parents have to sign if they're under 18. And then on the second floor, expand that to having some social and emotional support for our students. And again, to report, we're going to work with your attorney to make this happen if everything falls in line.
Is there any questions or comments from the audience regarding the approval of the agreement with Community Health Net Inc? Do I hear a motion to approve the agreement with Community Health Net Inc?
This is not approval, it's just a report.
Yeah.
Oh.
We're going to, but.
What are we approving?
It's a report, that's what I said at the beginning, and we hope to get it to the next level with the help of our attorney.
Okay.
President Rodriguez, I did want to make mention, I did ask, just as you guys are moving forward, one of the items that I remember from when we had the clinic, as well as what's on here, is how someone is, how they're getting paid. So I know immediately it, you get paid through the Medicaid, Medicare, or we will pick up the cost, the school system will pick up the cost for it. And because of that, I think we were getting funding for the clinic previously through a grant, and then when the grant, we didn't have the grant anymore, so then that clinic at that point ended up going away. Here, it's saying basically that the Medicare comes first, and then the student has to pay, the family has to pay. I just want to make sure that they're aware ahead of time, or is there going to be a grant to cover the cost of this? Just as you guys are moving forward, if you guys could just kind of?
All right. Well, I'm just going to just address that really quickly. There is no cost. This is, the Community Health Net funding comes from a federal program that provides free medical services to populations. And actually, this same program is also in Hammond Schools, Lake Ridge Schools, as well as Gary Schools.
Mr. President. Trustee Gomez?
I move for approval of 5.05.
A motion made by Trustee Gomez. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Trustee Smith. Any discussions?
Yes. This program, Dr. Mitchell, will handle, I mean, our students' behavior issues. I see that it did say something about behavior issues and the trauma. Will there be, you know, aid to help them through that?
What Community Health Net will provide, they'll provide vision, dental, medical, as well as mental health services, not only to our students, but also to their parents and the community. That's why we decided to, we're planning on, if we go forward with this, to relocate the health center to the first floor, where it's really, where there's not a lot of traffic through the building. They go right into the clinic, and then they can be served. Also, this program provides telehealth in all of our elementary schools and also our middle school. And that telehealth will be addressed, the doctors will be at Central, but if a student or a parent falls ill or need medical care, they can go into any of our campuses to seek medical treatment. And so this also has the effect of us leveraging our nursing staff with their medical staff and nursing staff to provide better services, not only to our students, but also to the families that, that our students are a part of.
Thank you.
President Rodriguez.
Trustee Hernandez Orange.
Attorney Harris, did you read this agreement?
Yes, and even provided edits to the agreement. The only thing I'll point out is I believe that there may be a comment or two from the attorney for Community Health Net that might be coming back. There may or may not be any, any comments, but in terms of our review and edits of the agreement, we've done that. We've been working closely with Dr. Mitchell on it.
So can you show me where it says that they're picking up, because they'll be picking up the services for payment? Because I know on, under fees, under 2.2, it says both parties acknowledge the receipt of adequate and sufficient consideration due to the benefits derived from the nature of the agreement, arrangement under this agreement. So where does it say, though, that they're picking up the cost for all this?
So I don't think that was a contractual provision. I think that comment was based upon Dr. Mitchell's familiarity with Community Health Net's funding generally. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Mitchell, but I think that's what you were referring to, correct?
Correct. Correct. So what do we want to put that into in the agreement?
We could put it into the agreement. We also, though, could make it clear in the consent to care that there won't be a financial obligation as a result of it. There's a, if you scroll all the way down, there's a consent for medical treatment of minors form. We can make it clearer there so that when they consent to have the child receive medical treatment, that they understand that there isn't going to be a financial obligation. We could do that on that form. If I'm a parent, I think it would stand out there better than it would in the actual agreement itself. That's just a suggestion.
No, I agree. I just, again, we had a clinic once before, and because we didn't have the funding, then we had no clinic whatsoever. So I want to make sure that if we're going to go forward with this, that, one, the parents won't be affected in the backend. I remember students getting, parents getting charged $100 for a bag of ice from a clinic that we previously had. So I don't want that for our kids in the backend. We have parents who don't have Medicare, who are now financially in trouble. I've seen it before. So I just don't, I want to make sure that we're saying somewhere that our families and our parents are not going to be affected. It's all going to be paid for.
I don't think there's anything wrong with including that, that language. Dr. Mitchell, you see any issue with that? Okay.
So can we just approve it with that?
As long as whoever made the motion will accept that amendment.
Okay.
I believe, Mr. President.
Trustee Gomez.
This is a report. It's not the actual document that we're going to.
Correct.
Finally approve, so.
Please.
I would rather wait until that point in time, let the administration do their job, and then they can bring it back to us. They've gotten input now from the board. The community's had opportunity to speak on this. So I'd rather let the administration do their job and present that to us at the appropriate time.
I'll make sure we incorporate that, and you can see it reflected.
Yeah, that's great.
I think that's a good recommendation.
Thank you, trustee Gomez.
Any other discussions? Madam Secretary, roll call. And let's clarify, this is just a report that we're approving.
Correct.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Yes. Why are we voting in the report?
Trustee, I mean, attorney Harris?
I think that was just a preference. That was my understanding, that the superintendent wanted to report it out.
That we didn't have to vote on a report.
I was just talking to the superintendent that next time, we could just put it up in discussions, if that's the case.
Yeah, you technically don't need the vote. What it does do, though, is it gives me, you know, a clear indication from the board that you want to move forward with it, so that we can continue to finalize the negotiation with Community Health Net and bring it back to the board for an actual.
All right. Since there was a motion second, let's go ahead and move forward with the.
So what are we approving?
We're just approving the report.
Report.
That was made by attorney Brago and Dr. Mitchell. I mean, I'm sorry, Superintendent Brago. Continue.
Trustee Orange?
Yes, yes.
Chairman Rodriguez?
Give me one second here. 5.06, approval of Bridget Pettis All-Star Basketball Camp, March 27 to April 1, pending, of course, this is a pending, on the rental form and insurance liability. Dr. Brago?
Yes, this is an outstanding young lady, played for E. Chicago Central Basketball Team. She was an All-Stater. She went on to play professional basketball on various teams, so she wants to give back to our community. She's going to be hosting a basketball camp, March 27 through April 1. It's no cost to our students, so we're working all the details to make this happen, and thank Ms. Pettis for returning to E. Chicago and helping our students.
At this time, is there any questions or comments from the audience? Go ahead and stand. Actually, can you approach the mic?
Yeah, please.
I always forget to tell people.
Do I need to give my name and all that fun stuff?
Yeah, if you like.
Okay.
Just for the record.
Lourdes Hicks, 512 Grove Street, Chicago. My question is just, is there an age limit for them? Is it all schools? Is it high school for this basketball camp? And is it just girls or?
No, I don't have all the details, but it's open to all our students. It doesn't matter what the age. I believe it's, we're trying for sure to get at least 100 students, so it's free to them. Everyone is welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Hear none? Do I hear a motion from the floor?
Mr. President, I move for approval of 5.06.
Okay. Trustee Gomez makes a motion. Do I hear a second? I'll second the motion. Any discussions? Madam Secretary, roll call. Hear none?
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Yes.
Chairman Rodriguez?
Yes. Item six, subcommittees. 6.01, approval of policy 1310 for second reading. Trustee Gomez?
Mr. President, I'm going to ask for this policy to be tabled, as one of our colleagues isn't here, and actually just highlights the need for something like this, her absence, that is. So if we can, I'd just like to move to table this till our next meeting.
Okay. That'll have to be in the form of a motion, correct? Trustee Harris?
Yes.
I'll second that motion. Any discussions? Roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Yes, trustee Rodriguez, you didn't let me speak, though. I was just wondering if trustee Gomez ended up getting the information to me.
He's just tabling the.
I know, so then he has enough time to give me the information that was asked by, previously, I think it was about a week ago when we sent the information. So just for next time, so he can have it. That'd be great.
All right.
And yes.
Chairman Rodriguez?
I would go into Finance Committee, 6.02. Trustee Gibson Keane is not feeling well today. She did give me a call, and she wanted me just to inform you that the next finance meeting will be held at the administration office on February 14 at 6:00 p.m. Number seven, Superintendent remarks, Dr. Brago.
Yes. Central High School will be hosting the semi-state wrestling tournament this Saturday from, at 8 o'clock, February 11. The qualifiers from Holbert, Crown Point, Logan Spur, and Penn Regionals will try to advance to the state finals. So we're happy to be hosting that. Also, last Friday, on February 3, four students from Central High School visited Valparaiso University. They met with the president of the university and also toured the campus. The students were senior Julius Murillo, senior DeAndre Brown, senior Isidro Guadama Lea, and junior James Nelson, I'm sorry, James Newsome. Also, I want to let our community know that on Wednesday, February 15, we'll be having a second superintendent forum. The morning session will be at Washington Elementary at 9:00 a.m., and the evening session will be at Central High School at 6:00 p.m., and all the community and parents are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee remarks? Any trustee remarks?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Brago, I'd just like to ask you, what's our school letter grade?
Our school letter grade? There's two grades. One is the federal grades, and all the schools are rated F. And then Indiana has put on hold the other grades, but I would say all those are not good also. And this year, they're not going to grade our schools, so we're on hold. But next year, they will come in and grade our schools. That's the Indiana Department of Education.
So in between that time, what are we going to do for these deficiencies?
What are we going to do for the deficiencies? Well, we're going to be doing a lot of things, but the most important thing is, at our superintendent forum, we're going to be very truthful with our community and tell them, this is where we're at, these are some deficiencies, for example, the graduation rate, and the immediate steps that we're taking to address all these concerns.
Okay, so as of February the 1st, the ADM count.
The ADM?
ADM count, done February the 1st?
You're talking about the 100th?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. What is the question on that?
What is it?
Was it done? Was it completed? It was due February the 1st?
To my knowledge, it was. We were promoting in our school.
So do we have the actual count?
Do I have the actual numbers?
Yeah.
I don't have the actual numbers.
Okay. And my last question to you would be, do you have the IREED scores or assessments, ILEARN or PSAT?
Yes, we have all those, and we plan on sharing that information also. And we have it for all our board members, if you're welcome to come in. And I think board members that want to get that information, they're welcome to come in and sit down with either. The IREEDs would be the Director of Elementary Education. The SAT would be the Director of Secondary Education.
Any other trustee remarks?
Trustee Rodriguez?
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
I'm sorry, President, sorry. I told you I was going to mess up. First thing is, Dr. Brago, can you just disseminate the information to all the board members of all the test scores and all that she's asking for? Some of us are not able to come during the day in order for us to receive that, but we are board members, so it would be nice for you to disseminate the information. Past superintendents definitely did that, so I know I talked to trustee Rodriguez about some reports that past superintendents did, and I'll try to remember to send it to you so you could see how they worked and showed us all these numbers. The second thing to that is, last year, when our teachers, our principals came up here, what they did was, they didn't fill their presentation with just the positive things. They showed us the real. So they showed us the grades and the testing scores of where they're at, and then they showed us, you know, where, how, the growth. And then they showed us the growth compared to where we should be at the state level. Some did, not all. But I think that that's what we should be focused on, those numbers. I'm glad that we're doing supports of, you know, showing the kids to be positive and all the positive things we're bringing to the buildings, but if our focus is supposed to be the curriculum and how we're improving, then can we see it? Because, again, we cannot walk these buildings all day, every day, like everybody else. It'd be nice to be able to get that information. Last year, there was a great job of every principal giving us these numbers, and not only did we know them, but also the community saw them also, if they were watching our board meetings. I also wanted to address a very concerning topic of the block school consolidation. And I say this because of the fact that when you have your announcement, it says on there, block school consolidation. As a board, and I think it was trustee Rodriguez made mention to you, of not having this conversation. The reason why is because we have no information, no knowledge, it's not board-approved. So in order for you to address the topic, you have to have board approval. That's yet to be done. While I understand that Smith and Associates stated that that was item number three that we should be doing with how to, like, close or do buildings or whatever with our buildings to consolidate and whatnot, that was item number three. And the reason why it was item number three is because they said we would not be prepared in enough time to get that done this year. And that was last year. So I'm just stating that in order for that to happen, you actually have to have a plan. You also have to show the data as to why. Your response to consolidation is what's best for the kids, but tell me the reason why. You just answered a question of, you're going to give information out, but what is it? Give me the information, don't just say, I'm going to give information. We want to know as a board that we're not giving that info. Also, I think you need to adjust to the school community, if there's going to be a consolidation, why? And then the plan for it, because you have to move very quickly if that actually happens, to the actual community of E. Chicago. So I think the goal is to make sure that students stay in the city of E. Chicago and our schools, but by closing, consolidating the building, and taking them to Central High School, some parents might not agree to that. So I think you should get the response from the community prior to you even having these discussions out loud. And we're working backwards. I also feel like the community will look bad upon the board, because we just approved to have brand-new windows and doors over $50,000 at Block, and we're going to use it for our administrators and not our students. So I think we just need to rethink this, or give us some data showing that this is the real reason, that this is going to help. That's that. We also, I just want to tell my colleagues that, what's the topic? Sorry, I wrote it down so I could make sure I know. Oh, Women's Sports Day was celebrated on February 1, 2023. I bring this up because my colleagues suddenly have a great interest in boys' basketball, and I just want to say it's important to promote all sports, women's sports, smaller sports. With that being said, I want to congratulate our boys' swim team for winning the GLAC championship. This was probably a couple days after our last meeting, and as well as our girls' basketball team, girl sports, who also won the GLAC champion. And while they came up short in sectionals, they did a great job in the season, and they're still considered champions. So congratulations to them.
Any other trustee remarks?
Yes, Dr. Brago, I have to.
Trustee Smith?
Trustee Hernandez, orange. Before you go to the community, the board should at least have some type of idea, your agenda, what will you be speaking to the community about? Because I have been getting phone calls saying the same thing, that we're going to close blocks. And I did speak with you about that. So when you get ready to address the community, I think that it's a good idea to address the board first. Let's have a discussion. There's no final decision until after everything is solidified and all data is presented. It puts us as a board member in a predicament when someone calls and a community, you know, group calls you, and they say, well, what's going on? I have no idea. So out of proper respect for the board, before you start to do your form, which is okay, and it's good to inform the community, but let us have some type of knowledge on what's being said, because I can't defend you or defend the board or the district if I'm not privileged to have the information that's given prior to. So I would just appreciate that. Before you have a form, sit down and, you know, talk to us, let us know which way, which direction you're going, and we're not running this district, we just need to be more informative, because it's kind of embarrassing when people call and ask you something, and you have no idea what they're talking about.
I agree with you 100%, and I think it's even more embarrassing when people in our own district don't know what the schools are rated. But I'm just going to tell you how flat, all of our schools are F schools. We're not performing well. We have very few percent of our students passing. I will share the data, and I think it's very important to share with, not just the board, but with our community, and be truthful with them. One thing I will be sharing with the community is that our kids at Block are not doing well. And 250 kids that took the Indiana Learns test for, passed the math test. And if that is not something that requires urgency, I don't know what is, but I'm out there, I'm telling, sharing the data. I've shared it with you at prior meetings. I've had board members come in and share the data. People are welcome in my office anytime, but that's what we're here for. And I know there's a lot of talk and plans that we're going to do stuff, we're going to do things, but if you hired me, I'm past that stage. I'm telling you, there's urgency here, and if we're not careful, we are really hurting our students, we're hurting our community, and something has to be done now. I didn't say that there's going to be a consolidation. I'm putting that in people's ear, that we need to do something at our superintendent forum. We're going to put a questionnaire out there for our community members and say, what can we do to turn things around? Help us. But we can't just keep things the same, because if you keep things the same, you can get the same results. And as I said, you showed me the data last year. You said from 8%, we went to 10%, which was, if we have 3,000 students, that was, we went from 240 to 300 out of 3,000, and you're saying we're improving. And I'm saying, that's failure. You know, we have to do something, because I hate to tell you this, but. I hate to tell you this, but, but state can come in and they can put consequences on you. And all I'm trying to do is be proactive so the state does not come in and put consequences on our district. I've seen it done. Uh, it's not a good thing, but, uh, again, I, I can only put forth recommendations and the board, you have to make the final decisions. I understand that. And I'm willing to give you as much information as you need, because all I'm saying is, I'm going to give you the data. Let's do something about it. Let's just not keep doing things the same, same way.
Any other discussions?
Mr. President?
Uh, trustee Gomez.
I really didn't want to address this subject, but, um, while we're on it, I guess I should say that, um, superintendent Bregel called me twice today. I didn't answer the phone either time, uh, as I was tied up in a meeting. But when I did call him back, um, he did ask me if I had any questions on the agenda or any other concerns. So I got to give him credit. I don't know how he treats other board members, but I'm assuming he treats us all the same in that, you know, if there's a question about grades, A D M, or, um, any scores or, uh, whatever that we're interested in, that's probably a good time to address that, uh, with him so that he can then research and, uh, present those findings uh, to whoever's interested or to the entire board. Uh, but I was, actually, uh, this question is for attorney Harris. Um, uh, President Rodriguez addressed the exec session that we had. But we did not approve that. Shouldn't we approve that as part of our agenda?
No. So I was going to mention that towards the end of the meeting. You don't have to approve it as being part of the agenda. We should have it, you know, listed on the agenda that we're going to certify. It's a certification that's read by the board president. At the end of that certification, and this is just for future reference, I know we're just starting to do this, but there is a, a question that's asked after you read that certification as to whether or not any trustee dissents the certification. And then if there aren't any, then you can move forward to the next step. And that's just something that I know we're just starting it, but that actually would, is what it would be. It wouldn't be a vote. It would be a request, uh, if anyone has a dissent to the certification.
Any other discussions?
Trustee Rodriguez?
Uh, trustee Hernandez Orange?
I did want to, uh, just address trustee Gomez's, um, question, uh, comment. So no, we're not all treated the same. Um, and as a matter of fact, I had all these questions lined up for the, uh, around eleven o'clock. And I received an email kind of giving me some of the answers. Um, and Dr. Bregel stated that he thought he sent it, but he did not send it to all the board members. So I received one at five twelve P M. Today. So no, we're not all treated the same. And I tried to give him the information or, that's why I've asked for the people who are over those, um, committees or over that department to come, where we're able to talk to them here in public so that if there is a question, we're able to speak. Because when I called him today, or when he called me at eleven-ish, he did not know some of the answers to the questions. He said he wanted to make sure that the correct people were there so that they could answer my questions. So you unfortunately, I mean, it's unfortunate that that's happening, but, um, I'll, I'll just ask in public and get the information. It just takes a little longer in the meeting. Sorry.
Any other discussions?
I didn't receive that email also.
I, I think, um, I don't think anybody received that. I believe Dr. Bregel, um, thought he hit send. I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Bregel.
And, and I'm sorry. You know what? I, I do call all the board members. I did have concerns, uh, from board members. I typed out all the concerns. The intention was to send it to everybody at eleven thirty. I'm sorry, I thought I had and I didn't. I did apologize to everyone. I said I'd send it to you at five o'clock. But, uh, in response to trustee Vanessa Orange?
Hernandez Orange?
Hernandez Orange. Uh, I did take your call. I couldn't answer your questions. To be respectful, I called the right people into my office. I said, I need your help. We did call you back. Unfortunately, you didn't answer, but that's why we tried to put everything in writing. But I said, I apologize to all board members because I meant to put out at eleven thirty. It did not go out to all board members until five o'clock when I realized I hadn't sent it. So I do apologize. But I think that is a good practice to use. When one board member has a concern, we give the information out to all of them.
Trustee Rodriguez, one thing we used to do too is send it per email. So I think to me, because we all work during the day, if we could just send whatever questions we had, because I did give him every one of these questions. And I'm sure our sports secretary is able to attest. If we're able to give them all in an email and he responds back in the email, that would be great, just so that we can have it, because I, I know how my schedule is and I'm not able to get all this ahead of time. I have a game right now going on. I don't want to be here this long. But if we had this stuff ahead of time, then I would have not asked the same questions I asked you at eleven o'clock.
Duly noted.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, that's, that's good information. So just want to, just to piggyback again myself with regards to the block school consolidation. Um, if you haven't, if you are not aware of the forum, um, please attend the forum, because obviously it's a bigger picture than, than what it seemed like. I know we're only pinpointing certain areas, but if you hear the big picture, you're able to understand exactly what direction the superintendent wants to go and whether we're able to support him or not. At the end of the day, it comes back to us for approval. So like what, what trustee Hernandez Orange says. So definitely attend the forum, listen to the facts, listen to the data, because that's what we're going to go by. The facts, the data, and what the community wants us to do to move forward. The public forum, attorney Harris.
Did anyone sign up? All right. If you could, please step to the podium, state your name and your address. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this isn't a question and answer session, but rather an opportunity for the public to participate in the board's meeting.
Trustee Gomez?
Please be respectful of the, uh, other members of the audience, the board, and the staff. Thank you.
Trustee Gomez?
Uh, yes, there are two members that signed up. Helen Steinbach is first.
Um, good evening, Helen Steinbach, fifty-two oh seventy Seventy-third Avenue, Maryville, Indiana. Um, I'm here tonight to, um, make sure that all of our school board members and our superintendent has, um, Senate Bill three oh five on your agenda. They're rating public education again. And I hope that the Superintendents Association and the School Board Association are going to speak up along with A F T Indiana and I S T A against this terrible bill that's rating public education yet again. So please be aware, call the Senate Appropriations Committee, because that's where it's at now. It's in appropriations. And, uh, express your displeasure with this, because it's very scary what would happen if this bill were to pass.
There's one more person, Tyra Shaw.
Hey, everybody. My name is Tyra Shaw. Um, hey, I'm new to the board meetings. I'm new to the East Chicago area and the school. And I'm so glad that I came today, um, not knowing the school ratings and things like that. My concern is, I do have a six-year-old son who is in kindergarten and he's autistic. So I'm dealing with a child who does have a disability. But my thing is, now that he has been going to Lincoln, he has been going there since maybe October twenty-fifth, and it's like he has been struggling, 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 struggling. And also he having problems with certain people at the school. I have called the superintendent a couple of times. I have spoke with Ms. Wright, but I haven't got a chance to speak to the actual superintendent. My concern is, what should I do as far as now he is seeing a therapist? He is seeing a psychiatrist because the school is pushing him, you know, for medicine, for A D H D. But we already knew that he was autistic. But now, you know, the behavior is at school is like, you know, behaviors we never even seen or heard of. So it's like, you know, I'm just trying to do everything to help my child. But at the same time though, I feel like with all the money that's going on with education, maybe we need to have something, you know, for kids that do have disabilities. Maybe they shouldn't go to public school where people, you know, they're trained to teach kids a certain way or deal with kids a certain way and they don't know how to handle, you know, a child with a disability or, you know, they don't want to deal with that child at all. So that's, that's my concern. That's why I'm here today. And to be honest, like I've never had any problems with the school district, um, school previously. I grew up in Georgia, graduated college in Georgia, and I moved here in twenty twenty. Um, I really don't have anything bad to say about East Chicago. I have a great job. I work at a doctor's office. So I do have, you know, great leaders in, in my field. But at the same time, it's just like, you know, when you have a child that's in kindergarten, you know, he's not going to be six years old forever. And, you know, they just can't keep making things up or, you know, just saying, well, basically like he doesn't want to be there. But it's the, a lot of the things that have happened at his school and no one has, you know, addressed it or done anything. So it's just like, how do I go about trying to get different people at his school or how to deal with him? How we're able to deal with him on a normal day, daily basis. And I understand he can't go to school and play and do what he want to do all the time. But at the same time though, the way they handle disabled children, put them in holes. My son threw up today, all over his pants. You know, the social workers here, you know, nobody has done, you know, I don't feel like they have done the greatest job for Kingdom, Kingdom Dukes. And I have, um, made several complaints as well to the superintendent.
Mr. President, that concludes the, uh, public forum. Thank you, trustee Gomez. Uh, the next date and time of our meeting, of course, uh, the twentieth is a holiday. Tuesday, the twenty-first will be, the, uh, majority of the school board will be in Indianapolis, uh, for, for educational, um, not just training, but it's more dealing with, uh, some of the Senate bills that, uh, yes, legislative, uh, updates. And so our next meeting will be Wednesday, the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at six P M., which will be here at the administration building. Uh, do I hear a motion for adjournment? Motion made by trustee Smith. Do I hear a second? Second by trustee Gomez. Uh, madam secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez Orange?
Yes.
Chairman Rodriguez?
Yes, that concludes our business meeting. Thank you.